Hi, David. Right? You're not wrong.
You look so sharp.
This is my jacket, not panel.
Absolutely marvelous, marvelous. You're always dressed up.
I love working on it. That's good. Good morning, how are you today?
Turned the couch today.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, was Shaw not here? Are you equipped to speak to the alcohol license if there's a question?
Um, I... Let me ask Rochelle to come in, because she probably will.
Is she here already?
Yeah.
She should be in here. Good morning. I think we're ready to get started with our city council's special meeting this morning. Thank you guys for being here. We would like to open in prayer, and I've asked David Bills to open.
Please stand, and then we'll follow with the pledge of allegiance afterwards. Lord God, we give thanks for this morning. We give thanks that we live in a free country. We give thanks that we can gather together in safety. Lord, we pray that you would guide and direct the affairs of this morning. We pray, God, that you'll continue to give us wisdom as we lead. Father God, may you bless this city. And we give you all the thanks and praise for what we're able to do in this country and in this city. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Roll call.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Jangula.
Here.
Bills.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Haverfield.
Here.
Griffin.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Okay, our first action item today is the expansion and transfer of an alcohol license. This was in our packet. This is Serenga Lounge, Black Pine Saloon at 108 and 112 12th Avenue South. This is for on-premise beer, wine, and liquor by the drink. And I'd like to ask council if you would like anyone to speak to this issue.
Eric, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna have... We'll start with Morgan. Morgan, thank you so much.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is... License this before you is going through the process. There was talk, and I'll let Preston chime in if he needs to fill in on the legal details. This is a situation where we have an existing business that is taking over the space adjacent to them. So they are required through the state law and our ordinance to do an expansion just of the footprint of their liquor license. So this is the existing Serenga, and it will go into that next space. Black Pine is what they're calling that concept. It will be... Those are pass-through doors, and there'll be more food and a little bit different vibe, but kind of sister businesses working there under one license and a single owner.
My understanding, this has been approved by the state and the county, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it was approved by PD? Okay. Are there any other questions on this particular item?
So has police vetted this expansion or change?
The answer came from the audience, just for those that couldn't hear, yes, they did.
Thank you.
Because it does go before all three bodies.
And this is not the establishment that we had difficulties with on some issues a few weeks back? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Morgan. Okay, so this is an action item.
Mayor?
Yes.
I moved to approve the liquor license as stated.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seen none, roll call.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Jangula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
One, two on the agenda is also an action item. This is to authorize Napa Police Protective Association negotiations offer. So who will be presenting on this today? Thank you, Clay.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna pull up a screen real quick. To give context, the NPPA and the city have been having negotiation conversations since August 14th. We've had eight meetings in total. We were scheduled to have a meeting yesterday. Unfortunately, it was canceled since we weren't able to have conversation on the Monday council meeting. So I did just want to brief the council. We did receive a communication from the NPPA board this last weekend regarding just kind of a status update of where they are. We had requested that they take the last offer from the city back to its association for a vote. That vote did come back overwhelmingly not in support of our proposal. And to recall that proposal, it was a 3 percent... 3.11 percent increase for all levels within the contract, a 5 percent increase to their healthcare, and then we identified one-time funds for equipment upgrade... Excuse me, not equipment upgrade. Apparel for their allowance. So that is what we have sent back last time to... To date, and I will... Their last communication and what they would like the council to consider is a 2.75 base wage increase, 5 percent insurance premium, and a 1 percent for match on their deferred compensation contribution. They'd also like the council to consider a one-time use of funds for an increase in the uniform allowance. And for information on what those dollars look like, the 2.75 percent increase, the 5 percent healthcare, and the 1 percent 401K match would be a total of $823,673. That amount is $14,598 above the $809 dollar value, which is what we had last projected for an increase of cost. So as you'll remember, during the budget process, there was placeholders put for wages and healthcare. That was below that 800 mark. But based on the conversations and discussions with Doug Racing, our CFO, that dollar value, we could meet from the city's perspective budget-wise. So additionally, from the NPPA, they have requested that the council provide an additional member on the negotiation team from the council's perspective. I've put that communication and request on the screen. And so this is from their communication on Sunday. And their request is that we add one additional council member to come back to the negotiation table. And I'm happy to stand for any questions.
So today's action is we have two items that we need to discuss. One, who would be the additional council liaison into the negotiations? And then the other item is what we do with the offer that is there. And I would just like to make a quick comment. As most may be aware, that this week, the Meridian levy passed. One of the things that we're facing is that we have not increased a levy here, and we are on a very tight budget. So with that levy, our understanding is there is proposed 9 percent increase to the Meridian police officers. It's gonna be very difficult for the city of Napa to retain officers. We've lost two officers to Boise just in the recent... I think one this week and one in the recent couple of weeks. And it all stems around pay. For the city of Napa, this is really challenging. And this is the effect of 389, the fact that we cannot fund our police department. Not only in the hiring side, but mostly in figuring out how to fund the positions and fund the department. And these are ongoing operational costs that are funded out of property taxes. And one thing that I would say is, and I don't know if we know that, that our property taxes... The police budget exceeds the general government property taxes that we receive from the city. I just don't know if the public knows that. So this is a little bit difficult. So even trying to decide what to do today on an increase, we know that this next budget cycle, we're gonna be in a really interesting place, trying to figure out what to do with it.
Eric?
Yes?
Just for a couple of questions. And for transparency's sake, Clay, how many meetings have we had and gone back and forth with the NPPA?
We've had eight meetings to date.
Okay, eight meetings. And so with the 809 baseline, that's still an $83,000 or $84,000 increase from what we already budgeted, correct?
That is correct.
So now with the addition of what they're asking, they are wanting an additional $97,000 on top of what we allotted through the budget cycle regarding police staffing and increases?
Mayor and Council, that is correct. I do want to just note, the dollar value that was put in the budget, I think, was intended as placeholders. So we did a budget for what the average our city employee staff were getting on the cost of living increase in merit. And then there was a 3.72 percent hold place for the insurance premium, recognizing that was more than likely going to be higher. So at the same time, I think it's important to note that the wage that they've proposed is a decrease from what the city has scheduled or budgeted in recognition that the deferred comp is an important component for their membership as they have a rule of 80 versus a rule of 90, and that that difference is important to them from a recruitment and retention standpoint.
From recruitment and retention, thinking about retirement when they hit the rule of 90. So for the sake of transparency, again, I feel that I'm gonna flush all this out. The deferred comp dollars that they're requesting are intended to go for more senior police that have made their time at the city of Napa and retiring at the rule of 90. So in the sense of recruitment, it doesn't necessarily benefit entry employees if they end up transferring to another department, state agency, or what be it, correct?
I would say the deferred comp is an opportunity for any employee or any police officer within the union or the association to provide those funds, right? So if they transfer out, that's still of value to them. I think at the... From a recruitment and retention, when we look at the overall compensation packages that we're competing against with other cities, deferred comp is one of those components. And while some may choose not to use that to begin with, it is still a benefit to them. But it, you know, right now it's a 2 percent. They're asking for a 1 percent increase to go to 3. Some of our competition have a 4 percent. It's a little hard to compare apples to apples because of the different compensation packages that are available. But from the association's perspective of what they've communicated to us, the deferred comp bucket is important to all of its members.
And then Eric, would you like to say... Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, just a couple of points. So, Mayor and Council, so on the deferred compensation, from talking to the NPPA, about 80 percent of their membership takes advantage of it, which is a good number. That means new officers are taking advantage of that. They recognize the benefit of that benefit over the course of their career. And since they have an earlier retirement age, there's a bigger gap between age 65 and when police officers typically retire. So that helps fund that gap because you take on all of your insurance, all those things that you have to pay for if you do retire early or do retire at your full retirement. So there is that. Also, I just wanted to speak to the... What was budgeted by the city was not... Was a 3.7 percent increase to insurance. The general city employees got a 7 percent adjustment to their insurance. So coming up to 5 percent was probably really what should have been budgeted. So that $83,000 that we're speaking about as an increase to what was budgeted was probably not what should have realistically been budgeted for the start of negotiations. So I don't want it to look like that is a big increase. That's the gap from what was set aside as a placeholder, as the Chief of Staff mentioned. But I think it's a misleading number if you look at it just that way.
Mayor, another question for Eric, then, if I could. In your opinion, do you think the increase on deferred comp will help bring in new officers to the city of Napa?
I think it will. It is a good benefit. I do hate to see the decrease to 2.75 percent as an offset to that, but I understand where the city is. This is what the negotiations, what the NPPA has come back with as a compromise for that. So I think this is a good offer.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Reynolds?
Thank you for your comments, Captain Skogland. I was also wondering if I could hear from Captain Daniels, his perspective on it. Also because he's sleeping back there, so...
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Honestly, I don't know of anything to add. Clay and Eric both articulated, I think, very well. From an administrative standpoint, that small decrease in the wage isn't gonna have an impact on our recruitment ability from where our dollar's at. The levy that's gonna kick in for next year from Meridian, that's gonna be the hurdle that we're worried about. This small amount, I don't think makes a difference to us when we look at what our hard dollars are per hour. In the long run, I think this deal is a better deal for their employees because that gap, that's a gap that some of us are experiencing right now, and it is a big deal. And so I think for them to have the ability to put that money away to help bridge that gap is a higher priority for them, and I think it's good for us. I think it has a really strong impact on our retention as well as recruitment.
Eric, if I could. So just speaking to that, you mentioned the gap. The gap in all areas are pay, insurance, and deferred comp? Or just deferred comp or insurance? What is the big pressing need?
Well, the clarification, when I said gap, I'm talking about that time when you retire between ages 51 and 55, for example. You got a 10-year timeframe that you've gotta find a way to fund your insurance to get to Medicare. So this deferred comp is a great tool that will help those employees find a way to bridge that gap. I think most of us go on to some other form of employment. But I'll be honest with you, this is a full-contact sport. You're kind of worn out by the time you get to the end of this career, and I can speak very, very much so with authority on that. And so having that ability to be able to maintain a decent lifestyle and bridge those financial gaps at the end of the career, this deal puts us farther down the road that way. And I think that's a good, strong thing for the employees. And I think the retention on that, yeah, we pay an employee that for five years, and they decide they want to go to an agency that doesn't offer it, and that money stops and it doesn't build anymore. And so this is a great tool moving forward that can help us sustain people for a longer period of time and keep those good employees around for a longer period of time.
Mayor?
Question?
So if this was agreed to, is this a two-year?
I believe it's a one-year.
Can we go to a two-year?
Mayor and Council, that is up to the council's discretion. We originally went into things with a two-year. We moved it back to a one-year. As you know, the FY '27 budget, there's some uncertainty on that. So that would be up to council's discretion if they want to commit to a two-year contract.
Mayor? For Clay again. The $14,000 increase in addition to $800,000 to $9,000 base number, is that including the uniform allowance as well?
That does not include the uniform allowance.
They are asking for the uniform allowance, so we can't accept an offer today with... Unless we add in that uniform allowance, what is that amount that would end up being in addition to the $14,000 and the $800,000 to $9,000?
So the uniform allowance, based on the projection of what we had done last time, was $81,000. That would be a one-time expense. Council has the ability to present back to NPPA their offer. So it doesn't need to be a either you accept it or we don't do anything. Council can modify and present back to a counteroffer to NPPA that we can take back to the negotiations.
For another meeting.
That's what we're here for, and we wanna... You know, I will say it's been a... It's been productive conversation. It's been good conversation to better understand their needs. You know, it's easy to look at numbers. It's hard to put yourself in their shoes to identify... You know, I had an opportunity to go ride on Friday last week, and it was a good experience as I think the whole council agrees and supports our PD. But the other thing I did want to note on the value from the retirement perspective, we do have competing agencies that provide medical benefits from the date of retirement to hitting Medicare. And so that's a huge benefit to that employer, which is one more thing that we have to try and combat as far as keeping those employees in Meridian... Or in Napa, sorry.
So, Council, Mayor, excuse me. Thought would be is a 2.5 percent raise increase, the 5 percent healthcare, 1 percent match, and the uniform allowance for one year, the first year, and it's a two-year contract.
What would that amount end up being with the reduction from 2.75? I know that it's $81,000 with the addition of the uniform. What is the less of 2.75 to 2.5?
Those would be numbers we would have to... I'd have to have Doug run. I know at 2.67, it takes it down to an 809 range. So if you did another of the same amount, probably another $20,000-ish.
So it would still likely be an increase of $60,000 over what we did in our original budget?
Correct.
Do we have... Mayor, is Doug online?
Doug is online.
Yes, I'm online.
Doug, can you...
If you were to take... If you were to take and drop that to 2.5 percent, the total increase... The total package would drop to $775,966. So about $35,000 below the $809,000 we were at in the prior meeting.
So $51,000 of an increase.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Doug, where would these funds come from if we opted to approve or go back into the negotiations and fund the extra dollar amounts?
I have to reduce another budget to get there, and I can... I have some small valuations we use for operational contingency that I tend to... We tend to not use unless council authorizes that, so I could pull it out of that bucket as needed. It's not a large bucket, but it would be enough to cover this.
How much is remaining in that bucket?
Right now, well, let's see, we've got... Let me go back for context. When we had this a couple of years ago, when we were budgeting, it was about $2, $2.5 million. Now we're down to about $700,000. We keep spending into it, so it's getting smaller and smaller, and it will go away as we spend it.
Could we... I'd like to speak to that because that is a discussion that's hard for the public to understand. So Doug, and I'll just start it, and Doug, you can add to it. So for those listening, the city of Napa has projected that we were running into a very, very tight budget. And so what we did was we used ongoing operational monies for one-time capital improvements, knowing that we were going to come to the place, which we are hitting probably next year, where we have zero bandwidth in our budget. And so that's what Doug is referring to. That's gotten down now to $700,000. So... And Doug, you can speak to financially what you're seeing because of new construction and our levy being so low. What used to come in for new construction and for our budget is really, really low now. And so we're coming to a place of criticality in our budget. And so when Doug is talking about what he's talking about, he's been very careful. We have been very, very careful. That's why we didn't have to do a levy this year. But with our competing agencies, and that's the only concern I have with the two-year, we've got to retain employees. If we don't have public safety in the city of Napa, we don't have officers, and they're exiting to go to our neighboring agencies, that's very concerning for the city of Napa. Doug, is there anything else?
Yeah, definitely. So what I'm seeing now is if we take the property tax permits and the occupancy permits granted through planning and development and development services, in 2026's budget, the new construction dollars raw were about $329 million. We added to the bottom line of the city's assets. That resulted in about $900,000 of new taxes. That was down from $1.8 million the prior year. Going into '27, as we close out the '25 calendar year, the new permits right now are at $68 million. So you go from $329 million, that gives $900,000 of new taxes to us, to $68 million and a very, very, very small of new property taxes. So our base is good, the base is solid, but we pay for raises. We pay for the NPPA. We pay for anything else the city needs that's a new cost out of the new construction dollars and the 3 percent. That's where we get it from. So we're going to see very likely a significant decrease in the new construction dollars. I believe this is more transitory than permanent. It's more of an issue. But if we were to do a two-contract and guarantee a 2% or 3% for the police, that would... That might be extremely challenging to... would, that might be extremely challenging to live up to in the 2027 budget cycle as our amount of new monies will be difficult to manage. We'll have to prioritize extremely effectively.
And I would just like to comment.
Go ahead.
Doug, excuse me, Councilman Bills, you just made a comment that you're, you don't think that is transitory. If we slow growth and with now our levy so low, our new construction is coming in so low, and Doug referenced increases, but our cost of doing business, for example, I believe Idaho Power has an increase request. If I remember correctly, it's about 17%. I can't say right off the top of my head what our utility bill is, what that increase alone brings. Our insurance costs have skyrocketed, not because the city of Napa. It has to do with the international and then national reinsurance market because of all the major catastrophes across the nation. The city of Napa is ranked as one of the best-run cities when it comes to our insurance, and they use this as an example because we've done such a good job. So it isn't because we're not doing a great job. We're doing everything to get our discounts, discounts, and how we're running the city. The cost insurance increases that impact this GenGov budget has to do with something totally out of our control when it comes to the reinsurance market. So there are a lot of financial increases that we absolutely do not get to control, and that is all property taxes. So that's just a quick overview on budget. Yes, Doug?
So as we go into the, we'll start the '27 budget cycle next January, February. If what I'm seeing in the permits and trends holds consistent, as we do the budget, the use of forgone would be mandatory. We wouldn't be able to complete a budget without that extra money, but it also means that our capacity to hire new people next year, we'll have to really say, you know, that's not going to happen, we're not going to be able to add new positions. So as you make this decision or recommendation on to the NPPA, keep in mind that for '26, we're on relatively solid ground, but as we move into '27, we're going to experience a period of tightness. How long that lasts, Councilman Bills could be very correct, maybe it isn't, but at least for one year, I'm entirely certain that we're going to have a very, very tight year. The world is not going to fall, the, nothing's going to end, but we need to be, the advantage now is we have the opportunity to plan ahead, and this is what my best work has given us, that timeframe. But this is the council's decision.
Yes, Councilman Bills.
So Mayor, from my perspective, because of the uncertainty and the likelihood of a dropping economy from what we've experienced, it seems like it'd be in the interest of the association and the city to sign a two-year and know where we're headed and adjust new hires any further than, we've added quite a bit this year, and we want to keep the force strong. There's going to be a balance when we have to make some tough decisions. The economy is not going to do what everybody is rosy thinking about doing, is my opinion. And from, from the experience I've seen, there's a continuation of a decrease. You can only spend so much on housing. The numbers that are coming out, folks are paying above the typical percentages for housing, and there's going to be a continued restriction in that area. You're seeing lesser permits because there's lesser purchases. We follow the MLS as to how many deals are closing, and so there's changes on the horizon. Now, whether it's a dip for a short bit or whether it's going to continue is uncertain. So we're headed into tight times when there's going to be tough decisions. And so if we're able to put together something that we can live with for two years that gives the association guidance or not, if we're going to stay in a one-year or continue to negotiate, then we have to take into consideration in a tough way of what next year looks like and the year thereafter. And we know we're in a decrease because of the House Bill 386, and we know we're, have other issues forthcoming. We continue to watch our infrastructure deteriorate, so it is going to be a tough time. My thought was, is if we could get together on the agreements here and do a two, if that was workable, that gives us 18 months of working out what thereafter looks like. And so that's, that was my thinking on proposing that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just to confirm with Eric, was there much of an appetite for, I know originally we were discussing a two-year, but obviously there were different factors. With this agreement that potentially could come out at a 2.5%, would they be amenable for two years to hold it at that rate?
So Councilman Griffin and Mayor, and rest of council, I think that'll be challenging. I think to get to a two-year at this point, it's going to be asking quite a lot of the negotiating team in order to come back with a 2.5%. It's, you know, we've gotten to the point of a one-year because there, there was a number of asks from the association that simply could not be funded by the city. So, so to get to this point, the association said, let's do a one-year contract. We reduced that to a one-year contract ask to try to get to a agreement that we could get through a year and then see where we're at. Obviously, the longer negotiations go on, the more things start to play a factor in the negotiations. You have the market value that's going to change with the levy, as, as the mayor had mentioned. So the association's going to focus on the market value where we're, where the city is focusing on the, the economy and where we're at legislatively and all those factors that play into it. So there's a lot of talking points on both sides of the table. This will not be a short, it hasn't been a short negotiation. It will be much more protracted to go back and try to work out a two-year contract. We'll obviously do what, you know, council requests in that regard, but it will definitely be very, very challenging. And I think that, you know, there's just a lot of different talking points that are going to play into that. I know the uniform allowance, and Doug can weigh in on this as well. We have several open positions that aren't going to get filled until the April Academy, so I think the $51,000 or $81,000 can be absorbed in our police department budget if that's a one-year, and we can look at what that, that can be a part of a future negotiation. And I'm sure it will be, it'll be a talking point to be extended by the association. So, but I think that that can be absorbed in the police department budget with what we're going to be saving in those open positions, unfortunately, not being able to fill those right away. So, so that's just one element to that. But, but a two-year contract, since that's where we started, this is where we are, and then trying to go back to that with some of the now new talking points that are, that are present, I think that's going to be very challenging.
So Mayor.
Yes.
The old adage, greed kills every deal. So both sides are going to have to come together. If the association doesn't want to come together, then we'll, we'll continue to negotiate for months. I would recommend that Councilman Griffin and myself be appointed to the committee, to the negotiation table, and we start afresh with two new members and continue the negotiations if the association doesn't like what we're proposing at this time.
And Councilman Bills, just, just to make that point, I think our conversations have been very good. I'm just trying to highlight really the contrasts and where, how we're looking at it from the association's perspective in terms of market and where the city is. So it hasn't been antagonistic at all, it's been very, very cordial conversation. I very much appreciated the association's attitudes as they've, as they have come to the table, and we've had those conversations. So that's been very valuable.
Well, I can appreciate that. I just think there's a lack of appreciation for needs in all directions, and there's only so many dollars, and there's only so much tax dollars that can come. And, you know, our next items that we're going to get into, want, 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 and it just, you know, there, there has to start being the tough decisions made to continue forward. And so this is, this is one of those from my perspective. Council, if, Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to add, in my perspective of this, the original offer, the last offer that we had on the table with NPPA, adding the $14,000 for the 1% match seems, with the one-year, seems the best way to go. I think we could get it done with that, and we can negotiate it again in a year. The last contract was a two-year contract, and negotiating it again in a tough market is a good way to go, in my opinion. So I would be in support of adding the $14,000 to it and having this go away.
That means the uniform allowance goes away.
That's correct.
Okay.
Hey, Councilman Griffin?
To clarify, you are not wanting to have the uniform allowance into that offer? I understand that Eric said they could absorb it, but we would still have to agree to that provision, and then they would somehow absorb that potentially?
We can absorb it for this year. So if it were one year?
So it wouldn't be part of this negotiation anyway? The department's already been allotted their funds, so what they do with those funds is outside of the offer that we're about to present to NPPA.
Actually, this, I'll let Clay, go ahead.
So council approved the hiring of positions, so that would be in the wage benefit side. If, if the PD were to use those funds for something other than that, it would have to come back for reallocation to council. If council decides to use those as one-time funds or one-time in the contract, it would, it would clearly state that that increase is one-time. There's already a uniform allowance in the contract. This increases it based on the cost that they've seen with the increase of uniforms, but council would have to give that direction. And we would also be coming back to council for a final approval once we do meet with NPPA and get their feedback.
And it is effective October 1, so it, it would impact this budget year, this fiscal year.
So if we could, is it 50, $50,000 on the allowance?
$81,125.
For the uniform allowance? If we could cover that with salary savings from the new positions until they come out of the academy, then I would be in favor of that for one year, and then we negotiate that again in the next round, because I do see the value of having the increased uniform allowance for them in today's market.
So Mayor, can I just confirm what, what I'm hearing? If that's okay, or do you want?
Yes, and then I think we'll have to, there isn't an actual motion on this, but I think we're going to need to have a vote.
So it would be going with the 2.75 wage increase with a 5% increase to the healthcare costs, with a 1% for the 401K match, which is the total of $809, $809,75 plus the $81,125 for the one-time increase of uniform allowance.
I thought it was 809 originally, but now with the 1%, it was an additional $14,000, so wouldn't be?
You're correct.
823.
823, 673.
Additional 81.
You're correct. Thank you.
And how much of that would be one, if, if it is, if it's a one-year, it depends on what way we're going here. How much of that is, can we absorb through the salary savings? So we're not, so the overall increase in the budget is how much?
The overall increase for the ongoing contract would be the 823, 673. The one-time cost for the increased uniform allowance would be the $81,125. The 81,125 can be absorbed in the salary savings of the positions that haven't been filled.
So the 81 is on top of the 823?
Yes.
So we're up at, at over $900,000?
Yeah.
And we started at? We started at 721.
But they're absorbing, okay.
That's what I'm curious, how much is getting absorbed?
97,000 would be the increase off of the budget that we had set. 97, not factoring in the uniforms. So that's an additional 81,000.
You'd be at $180,000 total.
Quite a bit different than where we started.
Mayor.
Yes.
Doug, can you clarify that comment? What was $180,000 absorption or $180,000?
$180,000 I would have to add in to the 700. So we, we already know what the impact is from the proposal to take us from 721 to $823,000. That's, I'm going to have to find a way to eat that out of some other budget. If you add in the uniforms of $82,000, then we get up to that total of about $180,000 of increase, and I'm going to have to come from one-time monies or from reserves in order to make that a funded reality.
For clarification, then, 97 is what we would have to commit to from the one-time funding, 81,000 is what the NPD is going to commit to from the difference in time between October and April for the new hires that come aboard, correct?
I think that might be a little bit backwards. We're going from, yeah, well, you might be right, yeah. So we go from 721 to 823, so that's, that's $102,000, right? 721,000 to 823,000. That's 102. If you add in $83,000 on top of that of one-time monies, that gets you to the roughly $80,000 increase. 90, 102,000 would be part of our ongoing operations that would have to come out of the budget, not from one-time sources. And if you want to do the budget for the uniforms as a one-time value, that will be $83,000. I will tell you, if we put it as a one-time in this year, they will come back next year and ask for that to become made permanent, so it's a question of semantics.
So council, at this point, I think we have some differing of opinions at the bench. What direction would you like to go?
Councilman Reynolds is working on a motion.
Are you working on a motion?
Sort of.
Okay.
I feel like it needs to be left at the one-year, so we have the ability as a city to negotiate this in a year when we know what our budget's going to be. And if we can show the NPPA that we have a really, really tight budget, then we can go in with that offer at that time. From one of the two council members sitting up here that has strapped a badge on my chest, I know the importance of having these, this salary and the deferred comp as well. And in healthcare, everything has risen. There's a lot of risk that goes into this job, and I think they should get paid accordingly. And it's, so I think we should go with the one-year, 2.75% wage, 5% healthcare, 1% 401K, one-time uniform allowance for a year, taking out, taken out of salary savings from the new hires that have not come out of the academy. That would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, Clay.
Yes, Councilman Haverfield.
So, again, this is just a negotiation, so it's an offer is what we're voting on.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Also to reconfirm with the motion, obviously the salary savings is going to take on the uniform this year, but we would be committing $102,000 ongoing to our budget.
That is correct. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mingua?
No.
Bills?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Three yes, three no. Okay, so I want to ask a question on this one because this is very different. Council is responsible for budget, not the mayor. Typically, we are not taking a vote in executive session on this. It is a recommendation coming from council back to the association. And so I don't feel, in many regards, correct in breaking a tie on a budgetary item because it is the council's responsibility, not the mayor, and I don't mean to shirk. And I don't mean to shirk from this, but it is, council is accountable for budget. So different than a land use issue. And so I guess I'd like to ask the council, and I will say something. The greatest concern that I have is the fact that we have a 9% increase coming in our neighboring community and it's going to be employee retention. It's going to be very difficult. As we've, I couldn't tell you the number of officers overall in the last couple of years that have moved on, but we've had a number. And it, it's all about the bottom line, it's about the dollars. You've got new officers that can't, you know, they're trying to raise a family and they, they just need the income. So that makes it very, very difficult. So next year, I, we're going to have a tough negotiation. So I understand Councilman Bill's thought in tightness to two years, but I also understand the position of saying, you know what, it's a one-year contract. I don't think they're going to accept, especially with the levy, I really don't. And so I think we need to continue this discussion because we're a split council and I don't think that this is how we're going to move forward well.
Mayor? Just to speak to why I voted no a little bit, I, I think that we should consider as a city levying for police officers and for public safety. Leave it in the hands of the voters and they can decide. The reason I give pause is we already took FORG on this year, specifically the help police. Now I understand, and we've had the arguments and hashed it out, that that's for new officers, is to help retain current officers in NAPA. So we're having this, this balancing act that we're, we're doing. It's difficult for me, from previously not accepting the budget for FY '26 because of an increase, to then commit to an additional hundred and two thousand of an increase. I think we need to consider strongly levying similar to Meridian. I think there would be an appetite for it in our good city because it would be specific to officers in public safety.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification purposes, since you're not breaking the tie of, a tie vote is a no vote.
That is correct.
Clarity of the people listening.
Mayor, then I, I would suggest then that we reappoint two councilmen, councilors and continue the negotiations. So again, I'd be willing to serve. I think Sebastian, Councilman Griffin, he's willing to serve would be a good-
Councilman Griffin, do you have the, the time?
Are they wanting, two of us? I thought they wanted just one.
They want two?
They want two on the committee.
Two on the committee.
I'm good.
Mayor Kling? The, the motion is to add a second, so the way that it's reading there, Councilman Rodriguez would still be one of the members, the way that this is-
Well, this was-
I'm suggesting a change-up. I think we're at the stage now that we need a full change-up.
Okay, so what is the, what will the ca, is, again, this is, we'll go ahead and take a motion. Is that a motion? Was that a motion?
Are you?
I'd be happy to serve.
Okay, so we do have a motion, we will need a second to that motion. It's been moved and seconded. The Councilman Bills and Councilman Griffin serve as the council representatives for the NPPA negotiations. Is there discussion? Seen none, roll call? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jangula?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Motion carrying. Okay, so that is done. Now, we are not done because the council has to make a decision on what you're going back to the association with. We can't leave it. So I would ask the council, what would you like to do? There, that last motion failed, you can have a substitute motion. So the last motion was for one year at that level, is that correct? It was, okay.
From my side, we go back and just have a reset down. And then we'll come back to council with an offer.
I don't, Clay, you're the one representing in that.
And Mayor and council, I, I think it would be in the council's best interest to come back with a proposal or at least some guidance so that we have something to provide to the association. I think we know where they stand and what their desires are. So if that is not something that council is, is okay supporting, I would prefer that we have something to take back to the association for their consideration. Mayor?
So, yes.
Just so we can start picking this apart, can we get a vote on it if we want one or two years? And it doesn't have to be a formal motion or a vote, just-
Let's have a discussion, I guess-
Councilman Reynolds? Just restate your motion.
Yeah.
Restate your motion.
So my, my motion, my reason of motion was a one-year contract. Two-point-seven-five percent wage, 5% healthcare, 1% 401 deferred comp and the uniform allowance out of salary savings of, of a one-year term out of the salary savings.
Second. So it's been moved again and seconded, let's do another roll call vote. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jangula?
Yes.
Bills?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Do we end up with the same?
No.
No, it's four-two.
It's four-two. Okay, so that's our decision to go forward. Thank you, council, appreciate it. Thank you, Clay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Eric, Brad, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move on to our next item. This is 1-3 on the agenda, this is an action item. And this is to make a declaration via resolution to preemptively cure alleged violations during specified executive sessions and accompanying motions at minutes. This was continued from the 11-3 meeting. And within your packet, council and in the, for the citizens, there were a couple of, there was a letter from the Twin Falls County Prosecuting Attorney and a resolution. Have you all had an opportunity to read that? Okay, and then is there, are there any questions from Preston? For Preston, our legal counsel?
Mayor?
Any comments?
Good morning, council, no, no questions. Just want to make sure everybody's had a chance to read that. Maybe just some quick context. Since our meeting on Monday where this was proposed and we tabled it, had a lot of good, robust, productive conversations with the Twin Falls County Prosecutor. And I think we've reached a very favorable outcome, all things considered. I was really appreciative of their investigation, they were very thorough, very reasonable. And the letter, the letter speaks for itself, I'd leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilman Reynolds?
Madam Mayor, is the letter available to be read from the dais? Or the record?
It is part of the rec, man, it's part of the record. If you want to read it, that is absolutely acceptable.
That would be great.
Would you like to read it? Do you have it in front of you? Thank you. Go ahead, would you like to read that, Preston? Please.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Sorry, I don't have time to read. Dear Mayor and members of the City Council, this is, for context, Grant Loeb's Twin Falls Prosecuting Attorney. I was contacted by the Canyon County Prosecuting Attorney, Christopher Boyd, on October 17th in connection with the complaint of alleged violations of the Idaho Open Meetings Law during the council's discussions about the Ford Idaho Center. Because Mr. Boyd has a conflict in the matter, I agreed to enforce the matter under Idaho Code 742085. I have conducted a review and investigation of the complaint. The complaint makes various allegations, but I find that the essential problem relates to whether the city could properly hold executive sessions under the trade and commerce prong of the Open Meetings Law at Idaho Code 742061E. While the Open Meetings Law states that the exceptions to open meetings must be narrowly construed, there is a question whether the city was authorized under the facts known to the city at the time to go into executive session under that subsection. Though this may have been a technical procedural mistake, it did not result in a secret decision. There is sufficient evidence that the city held extensive dialogues and deliberations in open public meetings related to the Ford Idaho Center. Given the public hearings, workshops and meetings on the Ford Idaho Center, I did not find facts that indicated any violation was sufficiently causally connected to any subsequent action to require the city to declare any prior actions null or void. With that understanding, I have received an acceptable offer in the form of a resolution drafted by your city attorney, Preston Rutter. If the city adopts and passes the resolution, that will constitute self-cure as allowed by Idaho Code 742087A1 and will render this matter closed. If you choose to self-cure through the resolution, please provide an executed copy of the same. Upon receipt, this matter will be closed and I will provide a formal letter to that end. Sincerely, Grant P. Loeb's, Twin Falls County Prosecuting Attorney.
Thank you. So with that, council, how would you like to proceed?
So Mayor, with the resolution that's in front of us, I would move that we would pass this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the resolution, is there any discussion?
Mayor Kling?
Yes.
Again, coming in this morning, I didn't have a whole lot of time to, to do much reflection on what's being presented before us and I, I do like to tend, to get into the weeds on some of these things because words matter. Coming into the meeting this morning, I thought that we were going back to a position where all of the prior executive sessions and two public hearings were null and void. What I'm reading now is that that's not the case, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, that is correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, I had several questions in my mind, nothing that I had had a chance to write down yet because I didn't get this. I didn't get a chance to read this until about an hour ago because I didn't stay up late enough to see if it came through on my phone or through the city website. So I would love to have more time, it doesn't sound like that's what this council wants. But I'm wondering why we're even then having to sign a resolution preemptively self-recognizing something when we're saying that we have no fault. Your interpretation of this letter from Grant Loeb's is stating that we didn't improperly hold executive sessions about that item. And I guess what we're stating that we're preemptively self-recognizing as far as alleged violations are technical and procedural mistakes, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, just to be clear, the resolution you're reading, Councilman Haverfield, there was one on Monday's agenda. There was an updated one provided yesterday in an email to council at about, between five or six o'clock. Are you reading the one from yesterday or the one from Monday?
I'm reading the one that I pulled up on the city website this morning.
Well, you received, I just want to be clear, we sent an email to all council members yesterday at five. We sent an email, plus it was uploaded to the packet at five o'clock last night. And we sent an email, I think we sent an email, I'll have to ask Shar, earlier when the agenda was sent out saying that you would be receiving an updated packet and that we would notify you as soon as it was updated. So that then update came at five o'clock yesterday. And the resolution, as Preston will say, is very similar to the same resolution that was sent out on Monday. There's just a couple changes to that resolution.
And I acknowledge that, Mayor. That's, that's where I have a concern, is that I'm trying to go back and forth to see what's changed. I've had a little over 12 hours to do that. Part of that time, obviously, I tried to get some sleep. I'm coming in this morning, trying to be open-minded to the process. It doesn't sound, again, like I say, that you're just trying to move this on without allowing us to have ample time to be able to formulate our questions, to be able, so that we can properly respond. So I can't support the motion simply because I haven't even had 24 hours to review and cross-reference and ask the proper questions of council, our legal council, to make sure that we're not making a mistake. What I'm looking at, even in his letter, I have questions on to understand the intent of what he's saying that we are not responsible for, but yet we're still being asked to preemptively self-recognize violations in this resolution. What are we basically stating that we're self-recognizing? I don't understand that because there's nothing listed out there either. We've taken out- Mayor, let me finish.
I was going to say, let's address that. I'd like to address that question so that we, when you're done then, Preston, could you answer that question?
So when I look at what was in the original resolution, there were dates and times that were eliminated. So my question would have been this morning, if that was still the case, what breadcrumbs we leave behind for others that follow us to be able to go back and say, okay, at this point in time, this public hearing happened, this public testimony was received, but now it's null and void. So what happens to that record? Does it get X-ed out or did it stay? Now, I guess I can answer that question myself in stating that that's not the case any longer, that that is still information that's available to the public a year from now, five years from now, whatever. If they want to go back and understand and, and put together some sort of a storyline, that they can still do that because that's still public record, correct? Those public hearings?
Mayor? Councilman Haverfield?
Please.
There's a lot of questions in that statement, I'll try to my best to address them and I think it'll be productive. Let me give some high overview here and maybe drill down a little more. So for context, when we received the courtesy letter from County Attorney Chris Boyd, there wasn't a lot of context or specifics exactly what they wanted to cure. There was a little bit of self-investigation, trying to figure out what the specifics were. That was the conflict that out to another prosecuting attorney in Twin Falls. And as of Monday this week, he and I had not connected in great detail, only preliminarily. In the last four days or, or three days, there's been a lot of communications, a lot of calls with him. And so a lot more details have been provided to the city about, hey, as I'm looking at the facts, here's what I think would be needed to cure. That prosecuting attorney is the enforcing agency and they have the discretion to decide what they think the level of violation is or is not. As stated in his letter very clearly, the level of violation is questionable and even at that, it's very minor, as he says. It's a technical procedural question. And he has said to dismiss the matter and close it entirely. Here is a revised language on our resolution and we worked together about what that needs to include and not include. And so we have a more refined resolution than what you had on Monday because we had the benefit of input from the attorney looking into it. So what you see here is more tailored and tuned to the facts as he sees them. And so it better reflects what cure the city would be required to make for him to close the matter. And so with the benefit of this here, this, he is willing to accept if we were to execute this resolution, that the matter would be closed and be put to rest. So what changes were there? Not too many. Paragraph 1.7, 1.8, 2.1 and 2.2 are where most of the changes were. And some of them were stylistic from his perspective and some he thought weren't necessary to go to that great detail because he didn't find that there was a significant or major violation, just maybe a technical one. And so this is what he's willing to accept on behalf of the city.
And that's, he's willing to accept so that he won't continue to investigate for prosecution purposes?
And his, yeah, from his perspective, this would put the matter at rest and satisfy his review and investigation.
Unless other allegations are filed.
He's had all the facts brought to him for this investigation of the complaint.
Of the original complaint.
This is the one that was, that Chris Boyd had received, which he then passed on to Grant Loeb's.
And again, just for the sake, and I'm mad, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm just having a conversation, I guess, with my legal counsel. The original allegation that was filed stated, well, and Chris Boyd's response was there were two items that were, were considered in his, when the fire alarm went off, you know, he basically was giving us a concern, a courtesy, you know, you better take care of this, otherwise there might be a fire that we need to, again. So that's just more of that smoke detector going off courtesy thing. When he stated that there were two allegations that he was mentioning, they weren't even a, a part of, according to Councilman Rodriguez's original, was based upon a vote taking place in executive session. They weren't either, that wasn't either of those items that he listed. And one was whether it was properly noticed and the other one was it was an acceptable topic in executive session. Those were the two things that he brought forward. So that's what has been addressed here in this letter from Mr. Loeb's, based upon the letter, courtesy letter that he received.
Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, he's addressed both those points and more. So he addressed the motions, the minutes, he addressed the- So he addressed the motions, the minutes, he addressed the basis under which the city went into executive session, and he made a determination that there were no decisions made in executive session. And so on all fronts, he's reviewed it and sees no further reason to further investigate and prosecute this. And this is the procedural step to put the matter to bed and has asked that we execute this resolution and continue forward, and he'd put it to bed.
I think this third paragraph where it says there's sufficient, let's, I'll just read it again. Though this may have been a technical procedural mistake, and this is regarding the item that we went into executive session, but also, it said it did not result in a secret decision of something that was, that we took a vote in executive session, which we do not, but he, this is the important part, there is sufficient evidence that the city held extensive dialogues and deliberations in open public meetings related to the Fort Idaho Center. Given the public hearings, the workshops, the meetings on the Fort Idaho Center, he said he did not find facts that indicated any violation was sufficiently causally connected to any subsequent action to require the city to declare prior actions null and void. That is the important part. Because we did a tremendous amount, we held public hearings, we held town halls, we went through. And so that is, I think that's the answer to the comments that you're making, is his response.
The way that I read a lot of this back and forth, and again, I'm just a layman, I'm not an attorney, so words do matter. But I thought it was more based upon the, the resolution was based upon intent, whether there was any intent. And obviously, what the resolution says, there was no intent to do anything illegally.
Correct.
This is kind of a cover-all that we can say, well, because we're null and voiding all of those executive sessions, those two public hearings, that pretty much takes away the concern that we made a decision in those venues or, you know, improperly. So now what we're saying is, no, we don't have to worry about the testimony that we received. The public hearings took place. It's not like we're X-ing those out. That's where I'm trying to get, wrap my mind around what we're looking at today because it's changed. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and just add, Mayor, with the benefit of more dialogue, what we had proposed on Monday was probably more erring on the side of caution. Maybe with the remedy being bigger and more expansive, but now we've actually had more detail with the reviewing attorney. And in his professional opinion, as the enforcing agency is saying, hey, the remedy is actually, we would do it much smaller. So that's why I see it refined a little bit more here. With that benefit of that input.
Councilman Griffin.
And just a few comments I heard from Councilman Reynolds that I need clarification as well. He had mentioned that potential breadcrumbs that we might be leaving behind and the possibility for.
You're talking Mike.
Haverfield.
Haverfield, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm thinking Randy, but I didn't want to say that. Councilman Haverfield's comments about the breadcrumbs and future allegations, the statute of limitations is 30 days for after a vote is taken, and that has run its course. So with this resolution, in addition to that, this will be cleared up from this point on.
Yeah, it's a good point, Mayor, Councilman Griffin. Under the open meetings law, there's really kind of two sticks, you know, an enforcing agency has. One is, hey, could your actions be null and void? And another one is civil penalties assessed against the governing body members. The 30-day window for the null and void is from a time of an action. Based off the county attorney's review, he is stating here that there was no action that needs to be null and void. So the 30-day window is now irrelevant, and he's seeing no other further basis to proceed as to civil penalties. And so this would formally and finally put the matter to an end.
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, so can I ask a question then? In the original resolution, there was a bullet point 1.6 that is not 1.6 in this new resolution. It states the city acknowledges that it has been placed in a position where it must address alleged open meeting violations. Is that still there? Without a full picture of what exactly is alleged, thus necessitating the city to take preemptive action and to maintain integrity of the process? Is that still in this resolution?
Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, that is not in the new resolution. The reason being, as of Monday, we didn't have a full picture. And so we were doing our best to formulate a solution, but now we have input from the enforcing agency. So now we are not in the dark anymore about what they're seeking and what their review is. So that's why you see that change in the updated one effective yesterday.
Because my, one of my questions is why not wait until the formal findings? But you're saying that you have formal findings, but we're still saying we don't know what we're self-recognizing totally?
Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, I think we do know what we're self-recognizing, and I.
Just those allegations?
That's correct.
Okay, so if there are other allegations brought forward, it's separate from this altogether?
This ends in here and out.
How can it? I mean, if someone else brings forward allegations of whatever criminal intent, I don't know, then that would be different than this.
But the 30 days has run its course. For somebody to submit that after a vote, and this addresses the technical errors that 2.1, say, may have occurred. And in addition to Grant Loebz's letter, as I understood it, that stated that there wasn't anything that had occurred. And this additional step just helps cover us if something may have occurred. That's what we're self-recognizing. And then after, in addition to those two things, the time and the letter, it buttons up the issue.
Well, the issue really, it goes back to, because we held the town halls, we had several meetings, we had a lot of different meetings, and we held a public hearing. There was nothing done in secret. So any discussion, and because we posted everything online, everything was out in the public before any decisions were made. That's why he, I believe, my understanding is, he has ruled, as he has, which he stated in the paragraph I just read, that said, there is self-evidence, sufficient evidence, that the city had extensive dialogue, all the meetings, he's reviewed all of that. And so the point being that we have in some way self-cured the issue because we went public. Everything has been in the public. There have been a lot of meetings in the public. There has been nothing done in secret. And so with that, that's why he came back with the ruling as he has. So.
My last question then, Mayor, is to Preston, if I can find where I would have asked that on Monday night. There's a reference to a state statute that maybe, it doesn't apply now, I'm not sure, but let me look and see if I can just find it. And maybe I won't be able to. I wasn't prepared to answer this question. Oh, we switched from 74-208.7 A and B to 74-208.5, and some of this information. Again, this is where I'd like to make sure that we're doing the right thing, but, so the fair to respond is not, we are responding properly. Alleged open meeting laws, the 14-day stuff that's listed in here, we've complied with all of this. And that's why this no longer is a part of what's being reviewed now. So. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm still conflicted. I won't be supporting the motion because I don't, I don't think that I was given proper time to be able to do my research on it, to make sure that my vote mattered. So, thank you.
Yes.
Just point of clarity, yeah, we did receive an email from Shar at 11:03 in the morning, letting us know that we would be receiving something later that afternoon. We did receive another one at 5:00 PM with that further clarification of that final notice. I work a full-time job, I'm a single mom, and I had a three-hour choir rehearsal yesterday, and I still had time, so I don't know. I spent 32 minutes on the phone with Preston in the morning to get all my questions answered prior to that coming out. And then I spent another 20 minutes on the phone with him after that to clarify any questions that I had. And I, I think it's come to the conclusion that this has been clearly political weaponization, and I actually take really great offense to that. We haven't acted out of integrity at all, and therefore, I've, I will support the motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Roca. Rodriguez.
No.
Angula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Nope.
Griffin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. So we are going to move on to 1.4, and this is an action item. And this is to make declaration via resolution that city-owned real property, the Fort Idaho Center is underutilized and not used for public purposes, and provide notice of a public hearing for a vote on December 1st, 2025, for the intent to convey to the College of Western Idaho. So Preston, would you like to explain why this is on the agenda and walk us through this?
Mayor, I'd be happy to. I think it'd be important to understand kind of an overview of why this is back here now that we've got the prior agenda item put to bed. So as you know, this is not a proposal or transaction that we often deal with. A major transaction for a large piece of property, a lot of moving pieces, and a lot of things to account for, as this body is well aware, and I'm sure the public as well. And during that process, preparing for our vote, we, as a city, have reviewed various documents that have come to us after the city voted on the 15th of September to declare unutilization, which is required by statute, step one. We took it, our step two, which is required to then have the public hearing and then a vote on whether you will convey the property. That took place October 6. As is typical in a land transaction, you then start honing in on the due diligence and closing period, and all your reviews winding up to the actual signing and recording of a conveyance. During that process, we went to title, which is one of the normal steps, and they had flagged an issue when it came to the title ownership of the larger parcels and then the RV parcel. I don't know if we can get a visual up here, but if you can imagine with me, you have the arena and then the main arena, the horse park area, and there's some RV stalls kind of as an appendage that comes off up at the top right. So in that review, there were some issues flagged as to an unrecorded deed. And then there was flagged an issue about a document that was recorded but lacked a legal description. And as we looked closely at that, we found that that document, the latter one, was called an omnibus transfer document. And it's kind of a strange oddity, and it actually matched a document that we had found, the county had looked into back in August. And at that time, they presented it to the city and said, we found this document, it's odd, it's strange, we're not sure what to do with it. Where does this puzzle piece fit? And so as the city, we parked that and would review it during the normal title review process during closing of due diligence. It's come to my attention, though, as I've looked into it more, that this omnibus transfer document that lacked a legal description, title was not willing to say that the city may or may not have title or ownership to the property. And so on October 29th, we addressed and cured both of these title issues that were flagged and brought to our attention as promptly as we could. We had the unrecorded document that 20 years ago should have been recorded, and it had the proper legal description for the larger parcels. That was quickly recorded. The other document, that kind of odd omnibus transfer document, we went back to the Urban Renewal Agency, NDC, who 20 years ago had, that document was drafted with the city and them, and the eyes of the title company looked to be deficient. And so we, in abundance of caution, a new quitclaim deed was executed just to clean that up. And that was also recorded on October 29th. So as of that day, moving forward, the title issues that were flagged, which is what you want to do in a review closing period, is you want to have that done before you sign off on the final conveyance. We have addressed those, we've cured it, it's all good. But if you go back to September 15th and October 6th, there remains a debatable question, right, as to ownership of the property by the city. And so what we're proposing here is just in the spirit of transparency and in abundance of caution, that we would redo steps one and steps two with the exact same document that was before you on September 15th. And then we would hold another hearing on December 1st, as required by statute, for approval again to convey the property. Now, the difference between the October 6th hearing and December 1st, this one will be a little more honed in just as a proposal to CWI. If you recall, on October 6th, you had a buffet option of three. It was keep, sell the high bidder, or convey to CWI. So that will be the only difference on the December 1st hearing. And so there's a, there's a debate or an argument made that our decisions from the 15th of September and October 6th are intact, would uphold. But just in abundance of caution, what we're proposing here is to go through that step one and two so the process and procedure just has no speculation over it. So hopefully, that context helps give you a picture of why this is here. Happy to address any questions that Mayor and Council may have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Comments?
Question then. So is the hearing on December 1, is that a public hearing? I guess that's what, that's what this is saying, a public hearing.
That's correct.
As opposed to just a vote clarifying and correcting a legal description?
That's correct. We would follow the same procedure we did previously, so it would be a public hearing like before.
And the corrective action is done on the title and the legal description? That's all done? So nothing needs to be done on that? This is, this is, as Preston shared, in the abundance of caution because it appears that we have a very.
So the question mark is, the public hearing, whether it had the right legal, therefore, were we discussing the correct property?
Yeah.
And now we're gonna rehear a hearing to say that we're discussing the correct property?
Yeah. Not to get into the legalese, you know, there's this distinction between equitable ownership, legal ownership. And think of owning a mortgage, you have a right to it equitably. Legally, maybe the mortgage company has a claim into it. So there became a question of, well, as a matter of law, as of a snapshot on September 15th and October 6th, could there be a question about it? Sure. So in abundance of caution, we're just gonna redo it now that the process been cured, remove any speculation that could be.
And I want to say that for the council, to go through another public hearing is brutal. I'll just say, I do want to apologize to council that when the county said there's an irregularity, we need to look into it. Unfortunately, we did not, at that time, thought it was curable during the title process. That was incorrect. And it did not happen during that time, which has caused us, and you know, candidly, we would probably be just fine. As Preston shared, this is in the abundance of caution because, it's a really sad thing, and I'm just gonna say this. Just because people don't like a vote, to actually come against them and accuse of ill-intent and whatever is quite unfortunate in the world we live in. But in an abundance of caution, we're gonna go through the process again, just so that there is not an opportunity to say, hey, you didn't own it. We know the intent. The intent was, and it wasn't caught for 20 years because this is an error that happened over 20 years ago. The intent was to convey the property, and we thought it was all done. It's just that when you find a technicality, an error, and it should have been resolved back in August before the September 15th, it was not, which puts us into going over this again, of which I do apologize.
Yeah, Mayor, just in hindsight too, yeah, now we see, you know, at that standpoint in time, would anybody have thought that there could have been a title issue after 20 years and all the work the city's put into it? It's like asking any of us right now, could you say with 100% confidence that you own your property? Is there no title issues with your home or whatever? We all assume there isn't. But when you put a magnifying glass to it, there are some times that happens. That's why there's title insurance for those very instances. And so as soon as this came up, we promptly, quickly addressed it, we cleaned it up, and we presented to you just an abundance of caution, course of action. But yeah, hindsight's 2020, but I think the process here is straightforward.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, and then I have a question.
Yes.
So would this be for the parcels that were in question, the underutilization and the public hearing, or for the whole entire parcel?
The entire parcel.
That's correct.
Just wanted to clarify that, so, yeah. Second still good.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Discussion?
Question. Again, since the public hearing in the past where this was utilization conversation is still on public record, correct?
Utilization piece is right now. And if you refer back to September 15th, where it's a little bit of deja vu, we're having that same discussion here with the same exact declaration on September 15th is now. is now before you, with the rationale, the facts and evidence that the city has collected and presented to you, the case that it is underutilized for you to find. And like you did on September 15th, you would make a vote here, finding that it is underutilized or not used for public purposes. So it's the same document that was before you about a month and a half ago.
But it's for the smaller piece of property that was-
No, it is like before, it's for the full piece. The smaller parcel, there was two, there was two deeds in question, rather than pick one out than the other, this is being brought to you as a complete package, the entire parcel and campus.
Mayor, and again, Councilman Jangula might not like the fact that I'm pointing a few things out. When I look back, I feel that part of this, again, for breadcrumbs for others, since I won't be involved with these decisions after the first of the year, I feel that part of this was built on speculation and potential twisting of ideas to come up with the determination that the property is not, is not properly utilized or based upon the, like 1.10, given the primarily commercial and ticketed nature of the events. If that's the case, and the rec center, the civic center, the golf courses, and the parks would all have the same use ticketing or use fees that would be associated with them, whether they're by membership or by ticketed events like at the civic center. So if the city in the future uses this as a precedent to be able to give away properties, that's where my concern lies. I won't be voting again, or I'll be voting again no on the resolution.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Would you prefer I save my comments now or add a vote?
It's up to you. We have a motion and a second, and this is discussion time, and then we'll take a vote. So it's a, you certainly can state now or later, it's up to you.
I'm just trying, and I've had a number of calls with a number of individuals at this hearing room today, both public and legal and everybody else, I am struggling once again on this vote, simply because of the repercussion in the sense of public trust and the process. I was under the belief, when I originally had voted to convey, this is what we needed for NAPA to heal and move on, and then we get a challenge, and then we're going to get another challenge, and then another hurdle. And ultimately, this does not end today, it does not end December 1st, because then there's legal challenges that are looming, whether they've been filed, we can't say so, because we haven't gone through the process, and we're not at that stage. So I'm just trying to decide, once again, I, I'm, I don't know what the phrase was, wishy-washy or swaying back and forth, I don't know what it was, but I'm going back and forth, because I'm trying to weigh the perspective of the community and the will of the, the community at large, not small minorities this way or that way, what at large is the thought. We had early on discussed maybe taking a poll, and we found that it wasn't legal to take a poll this November. But I think elections are a way to gauge where the public really is at. And I'm not going to specifically call out one race or another, but there was a lot of races with a lot of candidates talking about process, talking about public concern, and the outcome showed that as well. So I wish we did have more time. Five one-hour conversations still haven't helped me make up my mind, and this hasn't helped me make up my mind, because I just am trying to think what's going to be best for the community at large, for public trust, for the process. I frankly don't know how we keep funding the Fort Idaho Center, but it is making money. So do we hold on a hope for the economic stability that likely isn't going to continue or unlikely will continue, or vice versa, likely will continue or unlikely they not, and holding on to prayer that we continually are able to fund this? I just put myself in the crosshairs of the NPPA because I didn't want to give them $102,000, because I don't know where we're going to come up with the money. I can see it now. Councilman Griffin hates the police. No, Councilman Griffin cares about taxpayer money. And then you could say, well, if you really care, why are you giving away an asset? Well, in the eyes of this councilman, it's a public benefit, yes. I think it's something that the community loves to have, but in terms of an asset, it's only an asset if we can tangibly sell it, liquidate it, and have those funds go back to you as citizens, but we don't want to do that. I'm having a real hard time. I'm frankly glad I said this now, before a vote, it would have been for a long vote and probably uncomfortable. I, hemming and hawing was the phrase. I am hemming and hawing, because this is, this is a 50/50 issue for me.
So is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to go to roll call. Rodriguez.
No.
Jangula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Haverfield.
No.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Griffin.
No.
So it comes to me, and I'm going to vote yes, and you all hate me, and I don't really care. The reason I say that is that this is, I truly believe, and the basis for utilization has to do with, can it be better utilized? Absolutely, it can be better utilized, and we have clearly reflected that. Under the ownership of College of Western Idaho, it gives a hope and a future to our students. The next generation of this community resides in that and the fact that we can't afford it. But the reason I'm voting yes is because this vote, a yes vote, takes it to public hearing. It's not done. I'm going to vote yes because now, and I'm sorry to council, because it does go to public hearing, and we've got to go through this process again, but I believe our citizens deserve the opportunity to go to public hearing, and that's where it should go. This should be discussed in the public and let the public come and testify, and we're going to go through that process again. But the reason I'm voting yes is because I believe our citizens should have the opportunity to have a vote and have a public hearing before we end this process right now. And I truly believe that, that a higher utilization is going to take place under the ownership of the College of Western Idaho, and I believe our citizens have the right to a public hearing, and it shouldn't be made at the bench.
Mayor?
So my vote is yes.
One question, and not countering anything you're saying, just on the date, December 1st, I will be out of town. I can remotely tune in for that public hearing. This was, I thought we were done two months ago. So I'm going to be gone for Thanksgiving and won't be back until the 4th. Would you like us to continue with me via remote, or can we continue it to the next hearing in person? That's up to you all to decide, and you can give Mayor feedback either way. I just don't want it to appear Councilman Griffin is trying to hide behind a screen rather than face what's coming, so.
Thank you for stating that, so we recognize that you're not, you're not intentionally not here, you had previously, but we have voted to put it on December 1st, and so it is, and thank you for joining us remotely. So with that, I would stand for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We'll move.
Meeting adjourned.